This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our Public Safety and General Government Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the 24th. It is now 6:07. I'm sorry, I gotta wait for, I think, Elisa. I think she said she needed 15 seconds in between.
I'm good.
Okay. So again, and, and thank you all for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our Public Safety General Government Meeting today and tonight, November the 24th, at 6:08. Today, before we begin, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We expect the members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. The moderator for tonight's is City Clerk Elisa Tinty, and she reserves the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise or feedback. If a council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. And I will call on members by stating their name clearly, by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcripts will be made available to the public on the city's website. Although we will not have public speaking tonight, we are gonna have someone speak tonight. You can sign up to speak at our monthly council meetings. Please email Elisa Tinty to sign up by noon the day of the meeting, or you can submit written comments for the record by the same deadline. The email is emtinty@kingston-ny.gov. You can also drop comments off at the Dropbox located outside the side door of City Hall. We also encourage you to reach out to committee chairs or your wards representative any time. City Clerk, City Clerk, and Clerk Elisa Tinty is the moderator for today's meeting. She has the right to lock and pause the meeting to reject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an attendance chair, Tony Davis, and committee members, Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch, Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morell, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly, Alderman Rennie Scott Childress. Also, and non, and it's no non-voting, but also city staff, we have today City Clerk Elisa Tinty, and we have City Engineer John Schulteis. So, thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Common Council, I wish you and your family good health, happy Thanksgiving, and I know that call, I know this call, and I now call this meeting to order at 6:10. So we got a few things on the agenda, and I know we do have a caller that wishes to speak in regard to a matter that's on the agenda for tonight, and if that caller is, Gary LaContare, Gary, if you can say, so we can figure out where you're at and believe your caller won?
Yes. Good evening. Can you hear me, Tony?
Yes, I can hear you. Elisa, do you have to do anything?
No, he's all set.
All right. You're, Gary, just state your name, your full name and your address for the record.
Okay. My name is Gary LaContare. I've lived at 12 Westchester Street for the past 35 years, and want to thank the committee for giving me a couple of minutes, and thank Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch for providing the input for this dangerous and safety concern that's arisen on our street. So, over the last 35 years, we've had a nice increase in the positive growth on the street, most particularly Westchester Street, as well as Bond Street. During that time, we've had a number of changes to the neighborhood that we've had in the last couple of years. The last six or seven houses that have been purchased have all been purchased by families with children, so much so that a couple of years ago, they started to have a school bus stop on the corner of Bond Street and Westchester Street. With this, I noticed, since I'm very near, two houses away from the bus stop, there are approximately a half a dozen or more children that come from the local neighborhood, possibly Staples Street, Orchard Street, and they come to wait for the bus on the corner of Bond Street and Westchester Street. The problem is, is that there's no way to control the traffic that goes up or down the Westchester Street corridor, and thus I've seen many times with parents and children being in harm's way of cars just really exceeding the speed limit on that street that has really two bus stops. Last year, the UCAT and City of Kingston agreed to put an additional bus route on the street, which stops at the bottom between Bond Street and Broadway, and as well has caused a little bit more concern for citizens in that corridor. So what's occurred that I've seen is, is that, what I'm hoping for, is that with the increase in growth of children and families in the area, and the fact that Bond Street is fully occupied and has children on that area as well, that we would strongly consider a safety issue that's occurred, which is the speed issues that are coming up and down the street. There have been numerous accidents at the corner of Broadway and Westchester Street, which I believe that if we put a stop sign up the street on Bond Street, not only would it protect the children, but it would also protect and reduce the amount of traffic incidences at the corner of Broadway and Westchester Street. The last thing that I'd like to put is that we have two other things on the street. We have a nursery on the street, at the top of the street. The good people at the Broodoff have a nursery up there, and they often take hikes down the street, which has been difficult for them because they just fear for the safety as they take some of these kids around the neighborhood. And lastly, the winter, when that comes, we once again have a dangerous street. Thankfully, we are a snow emergency street, so the city does a great job of plowing it and keeping it as much as possible. But again, without the safety of a slowdown on that hill, we've had numerous accidents, and with the increase of families and cars on the street, there's been numerous accidents on the street itself. So, I'm hoping that the committee would consider putting a safety stop sign that would not only protect our children, but reduce speed and protect the general public from traffic incidences on the street, that's the corner near Broadway. So again, I appreciate the time, and if there's any questions, I would be glad to answer. Like I mentioned, I've been here 35 years, and I own a couple of properties on the streets. I've been witness to several incidences and injuries and close calls with children.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions to him, or before we start? Patrick O'Reilly.
Hi, Gary. Gary, coming down the hill during the winter, you mentioned, and I've been down that hill many times, as you know.
Yes.
Where would you want, where would you want these signs placed, Gary? Because if I hit, if you hit the brakes there, you're gonna slide, aren't you?
Well, great question, Patrick. Actually, I was hoping it'd be a three-way stop sign. There is enough leveling as you level the hill just below the steep grade before the nursery school, that would give you about 500 to 700 feet to slow down coming down the hill. So it wouldn't be an immediate braking situation. And going up the street, you'd have, you know, you'd notice the sign, so you would not, you know, you'd maintain your speed or slower speed, I would presume.
And what kind of signs are you recommending, Gary? I'm sorry.
Stop signs, Patrick. A three-way, one coming out of Bond Street, you know, that's a back entrance into the Speedway, so there are trucks and Kingston City garbage trucks and all this stuff turn around there and come out, and, you know, they don't have a stop sign either there. We've seen a couple of accidents, people pulling out and people not being able to brake coming down the hill. But, you know, as people would get used to a new sign change, I would think that they'd take into consideration and know that they'd rather start slowing down coming down.
So there'll be one coming out there, would there be one going up Westchester on the right-hand side going up?
That's where the school bus stop is, Patrick.
And you'd want a stop sign there?
Yep, and then one coming down, and I guess it would only make sense to put one on Bond Street.
At Bond Street coming down on the right-hand side, you'd want one?
Yes, sir.
And there's enough flat space there, Gary?
Absolutely. I would say between 500 and 700 feet.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Before we have discussion? Some of you guys have to mute your phones. Gary, thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary.
And we're gonna take that up now. Thank you. And all you guys, I sent you out a communication that we received from our city engineer on many of the issues on our, on our agenda tonight. Rennie, I believe I sent it to your personal one, and that's the first one that came up. And so, and then, so everybody has that, what the recommendations are from, or comments from the engineer, city engineer, as well as comments and one or two agenda items from, and the superintendent of DPW at Norman. So, and hopefully you guys all got a chance to read that, and I'll read it to you. If not, and stop sign, Bond at Westchester. Request appears to be for installing stop signs on Westchester northbound, southbound at this intersection. This is not recommended by traffic engineer principals. Bond Street, being a minor street with very low volume, does not warrant adding the stop signs on Westchester. If there were to be, let's just say, if these were to be legislated and installed, drivers would become frustrated due to being required to stop when, in most cases, there is no cross traffic. And no traffic, presence on Bond Street. This can lead to disregard for stop signs, both at the location and stop signs more generally. Thus, this is not recommended. However, in the course of reviewing the request, it was found that there is no legislation authorizing a stop sign on Bond Street, and no sign is installed in the field. My recommendation, this is the recommendation of city engineer, is that the code be revised to authorize installing a stop sign on Bond Street at this intersection. So what the city engineer is requesting is to put a stop sign at Bond Street, and basically, I believe Bond Street is a dead-end street, is no through traffic, and so again, as Mr. LaContare stated, it's just going out to the back, on the backside of Speedway there. And but again, people can turn around there, trucks, as well as DPW. So he's recommended putting a stop sign at that location. John, is anything else you might need? John, City Engineer John Schulteis.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm just, I'm available for questions. So, you know, one of the principles behind installing an always-stop is that the two intersecting streets, if you do so, should have similar, relatively similar volumes of traffic. And that not being the case here, it would, as I, as I stated and as you read, it's not, it's not recommended.
Rennie Scott Childress?
Sorry, and I'm trying to look here at the map. It appears too that Bond Street is pretty close to Broadway, is that right?
That is correct. Bond Street is probably, what, 50, 50, not even, 50 yards maybe from, from Broadway? The intersection of Broadway, something like that, 50? Not that much. I don't even think it's 50 yards, but it's close.
So, the, the idea is to put potentially a stop sign for Bond Street coming into Washington? I mean, coming into Westchester? All right, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, and, and we would have expected that would already be in place, but it's not.
I think one of the things Gary's experiencing is the fact that Westchester, thank you, Tony, sorry to put it, Westchester is a major thoroughfare. If you're coming from Sorbetes and you wanna head out towards New Falls, you come right down Westchester, right through there. So there's, there's quite a bit of traffic on that street. So I think Gary is witnessing that volume of traffic.
We're not speaking. We can mute our phones so that we're not getting background, because everybody's backgrounded. And I believe Michelle Hirsch had her hand up first, then Rennie Scott Childress.
Hi, this is Alderwoman Hirsch. So I understand, John, when you say that it's not recommended by traffic engineering principals, but the request for the stop sign is more about pedestrians and the safety of pedestrians and pedestrians and children crossing down there. So I could see, I see the potential for at least a stop sign on the southbound lane to slow people coming down and to give, you know, give room and safety for pedestrians. I can see where it could be more problematic going northbound, because it would, if there's a stop sign there, we stop traffic and potentially stop traffic in the intersection. But I would be in favor of adding one on the southbound lane.
John, do you want to address that?
Well, yeah, so, so when I refer to traffic engineering, I, I refer to all users, be that, you know, pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles, but when I say traffic engineering, it's, it's all of those users. So a, a split, a split decision where only northbound would get a stop or only southbound? It's a not, it's, it's also a non-standard application, and it can create, it can create confusion there, especially for like, turning vehicles have the right-of-way, you know, we see that, for example, John Street at Clinton has a similar arrangement. In that case, you know, there's a, there's a volume concern why that's that way. If, if the council, you know, decides to install an always-stop here, you know, it is acceptable. I wouldn't say it's unsafe, but it's the type of application of a stop sign that traffic engineering considerations would, would say, overall, it tends to lead to a disregard for stop signs when, when people approach an intersection and being told to stop by the sign, and there's rarely, if ever, a, a traffic on the cross street, that tends to lead to disrespect for stop signs over time.
Rennie Scott Childress, and then Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
It sounds like part of the problem here is that there's a school bus stop there that wasn't there in the past. So has anybody talked with the schools about moving the bus stop? Because if they've got it at a dangerous spot, that would seem like the more appropriate approach here.
Patrick, or anybody have, anybody have a comment on Rennie before I go to Patrick?
I've not reached out to the school district about moving the bus stop.
Patrick O'Reilly?
John, do you have any recommendations? I think Rennie's looking into the bus stop's a good idea, but do you have any recommendations for the concerns of, of our constituent here?
Well, I, I guess I'd want to know more about specific kinds of incidents. Are there certain drivers that disregard flashing lights on buses? Is it, is it something along those lines? Do the, do the kids not have an adequate waiting area? Is it something like that that we could correct? You know, I, if, if the council wants to hear more from the resident, you know, we could listen to that and understand a little better how to respond.
And I, if I, if I, Tony Davis here, I just, I'm trying to, and I believe Mr. LaContare or Gary was saying that there's a bus stop at this, at Bond Street on West, West O'Reilly, or Westchester, I should say. And, and that is where he's staying, the bus stop is, which is probably like 50 feet or so away from the intersection of Broadway. And so I believe the traffic going, coming down the street and, or coming down the hill is a little bit more concerned than the traffic that's turning off of Broadway going up and going up Westchester.
So Tony, I believe I've been unmuted. So actually, as you may know, I own the corner property on Broadway. I own the next property next to that. Those two properties by the surveyors, probably just under 100 feet. And then Phil Kelly owns a property on the corner of Bond Street next to me, which is another 50 feet. So you're right, it's about 125 to 150 feet from Broadway. I do not believe that that would impact if there was a stop sign on both sides of Westchester. I would agree with the city engineer, there's much less traffic on a dead end, you know, up the top of the street at the corner of Augusta Street and, and Westchester Street, there's a three-way stop sign that ultimately has the same amount of traffic, I would assume, but only because of the increased traffic of people delivering to the Speedway. But it's not only a safety issue for these children, and it would be different, I mean, certainly moving that would resolve that, but still there's a safety issue for the children that have come to live on the street, and the speeds that are going down and up the street are a severe concern for that. As well as, as I mentioned, you would reduce the traffic issues and accidents that are numerous on the corner of Westchester and Broadway by not allowing these cars to come down the street at a higher rate of speed and try to beat the light, which they do all the time when I'm working on my berm and the corner property. I witness it at least once a week or once a month, at the very least. But it's a dual concern for the citizens and their children and the kids that get on the school bus. But I would say it's more on an everyday basis for the children and the families that live on the street.
All right. Thank you once again. All right, no problem, Gary. I could see if you had a stop sign, so you're gonna have a stop sign about 100 and so feet off of Broadway, that people are gonna have to then come through a stop sign again before they go up Westchester. I'm not sure if that's northbound or southbound. And soon as they had a stop sign, nothing stops them from speeding up that, same thing coming down the hill. Stop sign, nothing that stops them from coming down, I don't need, until they get to Dunn in Westchester or Westchester and Dunn, when they would have to put on their brakes. Some are probably gonna just fly through that, because they only get another 150 feet before they get through the Broadway intersection. So, I mean, that is what I'm throwing out there. I don't know, John, if you want to add anything to that.
Can I?
Were you calling on me? I see that Alderwoman Hirsch has, has had her hand up.
Go on, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Hirsch.
Hi, Alderwoman Hirsch here. So I just want to point out too that my actual original communication said stop signs and a crosswalk, because from what I understood from Mr. LaContare was that people were, you know, crossing in this area and in an unsafe manner, it would actually be, you know, helpful for them to have a crosswalk there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, could you, could you restate the question, if, if there is one?
It, it wasn't a question, it was just a statement that my actual communication requested a stop sign and crosswalk at that intersection, because it was, people were crossing the street in unsafe manner and this car's speeding down the hill, so.
Well, it, yeah, if, if, well, I'll say a couple of things that, that occur to me. Anytime there's a relatively long and straight street in the city, the potential for, for speeds to, to get up there exists. And, you know, certainly Westchester is a relatively long, straight street. You know, the, the more, a more appropriate measure to control speeds might be something like speed tables located along the length of, of Westchester. We've, you know, we've installed some of these at, at a couple other locations in the city, on Delaware Avenue and on Hasbrook Avenue have those. They're more appropriate than putting a stop sign where, where it's not warranted by intersecting traffic volume. One of the problems that can occur with, with an unwarranted stop sign is that people, you know, they tend to roll through it over time. Also, it really won't control speeds on, on the street as a whole, because people will tend to make up, you know, accelerate even faster coming away from the stop sign to, you know, in their mind, make up for lost time for having to stop needlessly. And so, you know, and something like a West, you know, Westchester Street, it's, you know, a quarter mile or more long, it might be appropriate to install along that length one or two speed tables that do, you know, do slow vehicles down typically to about 20 to 25 miles per hour, which, you know, the city speed limit being 30 is, is an improvement. And there's less, you know, tendency, if, if there's gonna be, say, two in a row, there's less tendency to race from one to the next than you get with, with stop signs in most, most cases.
John, can you just explain what a speed table is and how that would look like to the public?
Right, well, you may be familiar with the ones on Hasbrook Avenue and Delaware Avenue. There's something similar on Joyce Lane near the stadium. A speed table is a raised section of pavement that you have to, you know, it, it has markings, and it, it forces you to slow down a little bit, because it, it's similar to a speed hump or speed bump, but it's more gradual. But it does, it does slow traffic down to typically about 20 to 25 miles per hour.
All right, so what would we have to do? Like, is that something that has to be legislated, or is that something that just gets?
Yeah, so the, the ones we've done.
Recommended?
Yeah, the other ones we've done are part of a capital project. They do have a, a cost associated with them, which could be on the order of $20,000 to install a speed table or speed hump. You know, that, if, if that's desired, we could look at it. I think one, another thing maybe to look at on this street would be bringing out the city's speed sign that collects traffic speeds, and we could compare what the 85th percentile speed is relative to some target, be it 30 miles an hour. And if we found there was a high rate of speeding on this street, that would support, you know, the kind of measure that I'm describing.
Okay, but I definitely would be in favor of doing, you know, this is, street has been a raceway long before I was in office during the time that I was out, you know, door-to-door is the biggest complaint that I had heard from anyone on that street, is about the speeding on that street. I know it's longstanding, so, I think that if we could definitely put the speed sign out in the meantime, and then move forward on at least the stop sign at Bond.
I'd be happy to, to talk to the police department and ask them to place it out here, and then I could report back with what the findings are.
So, I'm trying to figure out, any more comments? And so, I'm trying to figure out, and I know we said, we've, we've talked about a few things here, so just want to make sure when I'm writing up this, or writing up this proposal, so are we still, this gonna, this, this resolution, this committee report, I should say, is gonna state, and at this time, and stop sign, as the city engineer requests a stop sign on Bond Street? And is that what we are talking about at this time? And the city engineer will reach out to, and city police department about putting up the speed, speed data collector, or speed, what is it called, John?
Yeah, it was a speed feedback sign, it's, or a speed, speed detector sign.
So, and, so if I want to get this right, I'm just gonna, it's gonna read the committee report, it's gonna be. report, it's gonna be adding a stop sign on Bond Street and installing a stop sign on Bond Street at this intersection, at the intersection of Bond and West Chestnut. Do I have a motion? Or I'm sorry, is there any more discussion on it? So a motion, Patrick O'Reilly?
Excuse me, Tony.
Go on.
Westchester or West Chestnut? Which one is it?
It's Westchester, is it not?
Okay, you said West Chestnut, I'm just clarifying.
All right, so Westchester, I'm sorry, Westchester. So we got a motion by Patrick O'Reilly and a second by Michelle Hirsch. All in favor? Five, five, nothing. So we'll send this out. So again, and this for clarification for the public out there, it's gonna be installing a stop sign on Bond Street at the intersection of Westchester and Bond Street. Okay, Lisa?
Good, thank you, Tony.
Okay, all right.
I will also look into, you know, contacting the school district about the bus stop and seeing if that's the safest location.
It might be to see if they can move these, I don't know, moving it down Broadway and where the traffic would, the traffic's, and might would stop the flow. Or maybe, oh yeah, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
So installing the stop sign on Bond Street at the intersection of Westchester and Bond Street. Okay, got that one. Thank you all. So, next one is handicaps in, at one, one-ten Holm Street. And is there any discussion about that?
Did you get that copy of the placard I sent in?
Oh, yes, yes, I believe.
Okay.
Chairwoman Andrea stated that she should have received that or all. And Lisa, and can you let me know if that is not correct? And if you do not, if you do not need or if you do not have a copy of the handicap sticker with the number and expiration? City clerk?
I think we're good.
Okay, so handicap parking at one, one-ten Holm Street.
Make a motion.
Again, it's no, engineer doesn't really give it in. So motion by Michelle Hirsch, second by Jeffrey Ventura Morale. All in favor? Five, nothing?
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's one-ten, let me just put this down. Handicap parking at one-ten Holm Street. All right, the next one is well, well, no, next one is no parking at three-seventeen Hasbrook Avenue. You guys all got the communication that the city engineer sent you? And any discussion on this one? And Alderwoman Hirsch?
Yeah, so this is in my ward, Ward nine, Hasbrook Avenue. The resident at three-seventeen Hasbrook has had, apparently the curb, it's not very, the curb cutout is not very visible. And so he has people parking in front of his driveway constantly. He's had to call the police multiple times, and they're the ones that instructed him to reach out to me to request a no parking sign to go there, because it's just, you know, constantly. I mean, police have even given out tickets at this location.
And as you can read from the city engineers, and, you know, if we do put a no parking, we're opening ourselves up that we could get a lot more calls saying, can I get a no parking in between my driveway? Just want to throw you, throw it out there. So if there's no discussion, I, I would like to, you know, get him, paint this, figure out. And Jeffrey Ventura Morale?
Yeah, what about painting the curb yellow or something to make it more obvious? To make it more obvious that it is a driveway, painting the curb cut yellow or something like that?
Any question, any discussion on that?
Is that, are you asking John? I'm sorry, Jeffrey, are you?
I guess he's throwing it out there for anybody. John, you have a comment? City engineer John Schultzeis on that? And Patrick O'Reilly? Hey, Patrick O'Reilly. Are you, Michelle, are you requesting a stop, a no parking, to no park, to no, I tried to get the, I couldn't get the sheet up, so I can't look at it. Are you trying to get a no parking sign in, in front of the driveway?
Yeah, on either side, just to indicate that there's no parking there. The curb cut is not.
One on one side and one on the other side of his driveway?
Because his driveway keeps getting blocked.
Yeah, I know.
So he keeps parking there. The curb is low, like the curb cuts are low and it's hard to see. So the police have advised him to ask for this because they've had to ticket people numerous times. He can't get into his driveway.
Corporation Council and Dan Garstein, and then Randy Scott Childress. You're mute, Dan. Is there a reason why he hasn't reconstructed his driveway?
I believe that he-
Responsible for maintaining the curb. If the curb cut is not adequate, you know, it's really his responsibility.
I believe he's, he rents the house.
Well, then the landlord should be reconstructing the driveway. And as Tony pointed out, if we start putting up no parking signs in driveways based upon, you know, the configuration, we're opening the door there.
Okay, well, the police told him to reach out and request, have me request it, so that's what I did, so.
Randy Scott Childress?
No, I was gonna say that it's, you know, it's illegal to park in front of somebody's driveway. So I was gonna suggest if he hadn't called the police, it sounds like that's, that's happened a number of times, so.
Right, that's how I got this, because they instructed him to call me and ask for these signs, so.
I would recommend that if somebody's parking illegally in front of somebody's driveway, they have the right to call the city police department to come out and issue tickets and as be. And maybe these people who are doing this, I'm not sure if it's people who live in the neighborhood, and they will understand that that's someone's driveway, and they're gonna get the ticket for it. And like I said, I'm a little concerned about opening up a Pandora's box by putting a no parking on both sides of a driveway. You know, as Dan has mentioned as well, we could potentially have everybody requesting to have no parking on signs on both sides of the driveway, all through the same. And my thing is that-
Okay, so I will reach out to them and see what can be done about their curb cut.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, and if it's, again, I would just recommend that they contact the cops, the law enforcement, if someone's parking in their driveway, or as Jeffrey Ventura Morale said, maybe put a color, some different color there to indicate that it's a driveway. You know, I don't, I mean, I guess there's other things, ways to do besides having us put signs up and let people know that that is somebody's driveway. And, and as Corporation Council stated, and then the owner, I had to configure it's that, that particular driveway, so it's, so everybody knows it's a driveway. So, and we, we can, I'm not sure how to approach this, or to table it or to remove it from, from the committee.
I, I think you just let it sit, because, I mean, I'm, well, I'm looking at it here on, you know, Google Maps, and it's clear that it's not very distinct, that second driveway. So I think if, if the homeowner could do a little something to clarify that that is a driveway, because, you know, looking here, it just looks like it's, like there's not a curb cut much at all. So I, I think that's the best approach at this point.
Right now, and, and we'll, we'll just table or just leave it there, so we're still in committee, and Michelle, and then if we, if we come back in a month or something, it's something, we can talk about it under the whole business, if we're gonna get rid of it, move it, if you, after we've had a chance to talk to the constituent. Okay, so-
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no motion is needed.
All right, so we're just gonna table that right now. And the next item is handicaps at sixty-four South Manor Avenue, which is my ward and my thing, and all the proper paperwork in. And again, last month, we removed handicap from sixty, and now we're putting that sixty-four. Do I have a motion or any discussion, I should say, at first? Motion, Randy Scott Childress, second Patrick O'Reilly, all in favor? Five, nothing? All right, handicap parking at sixty-four South Manor Avenue. Five, nothing, five, zero vote. Okay, next one is no parking at CCE. Center for Creative Education, which is at sixteen Cedar Street. Any discussion, or do you want me to read what the engineer has recommended before we have discussion? All righty, so this request is establish a loading zone fifty feet in length, considered on the front door, where drop-off pickup of students may occur. Engineering does not object to this request. The common council could designate the location as a loading zone for certain hours. Per the request, it appears that their business hours are Monday through Friday, seven-thirty AM to ten PM, and Saturdays and Sundays from nine AM to twelve PM. The common council can designate the hours that the loading zone applies. No, zoning, loading zone does not apply on Sunday per the code. So is that the recommendation of the city engineer that we can establish a loading zone there, Monday through Friday from seven-thirty AM to ten PM, and Saturdays from nine AM to twelve PM? Patrick, you have a question?
John, does, fifty feet is a, quite a long amount of space to, for parents to pull in and park their car and let kids out. Is, is that necessary, fifty feet?
Well, fifty, fifty feet is about the length of two parking spaces. Parking space, parallel spaces, about twenty-three feet each. So pull in, pull out, takes about fifty feet.
And Randy Scott Childress?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I know that there's a business that's open there. I'm just wondering, I mean, I have no objection to this per se, but I'm just wondering if anybody has asked the, the restaurant business there what they feel about it. There is plenty of parking, you know, in the, in the back lot there behind it, so I can't imagine that that two spaces would be much of a deal. But just curious.
I believe, and from what I've seen, at CCC, CCE is on the other side of the, the business that the restaurant is on one side of that front, and CCE is on the other side of the front of the building.
In the middle of the building, sort of, yeah.
Eat more or less to the, if you're looking at the building to the, and right in the restaurant is more or less to the left. So I, I don't see two parking spots, spaces being, being a concern at that time loading zone. Remember, they're not staying there, they're just un, taking, unloading and picking up. That is what the baddest, the purpose of loading zone. And Alderwoman, and Patrick O'Reilly?
My only concern would be that U-PAC, when they have shows and concerts there, those, those spaces would be nice to have. I don't know if that can be worked in somehow or another, but like John said, the hours could, could be tweaked to allow for that. I know that, that, I know that parking is at the, a premium in that neighborhood when U-PAC shows are on. So, you know, after six o'clock at night or something, you, you, CCE is probably not as busy as it is at three o'clock in the afternoon, where kids are getting dropped off from school, or at seven o'clock in the morning. So I'm just thinking, weekends, maybe we can, maybe do away with weekends, or, you know, when the shows are. I don't know what you guys think.
Well, I think, I thought they said they would only go to noon on weekends, so that, that shouldn't interfere with any U-PAC shows.
Nine AM to twelve PM.
Oh, twelve, well, twelve PM is noon.
Yeah, noon, yes, so that's what I, nine AM.
That shouldn't be a problem. But I think you are, I think there is a bit of concern there on a, a weeknight, because, I mean, U-PAC does have events on weeknights. So, you know, and parking is at a premium around there when they have a show. So I totally hear what you're saying. But that would mean, I don't know if there's a, an intermediate way of, of allowing parking there, you know, when there is a show.
Yes.
You have to make it permanent, just only till seven o'clock rather than ten o'clock.
Yeah.
I mean, that would probably work. I bet if you have talked to CCE again, I bet they would understand and be able to, I, you know, I don't know what their traffic is at six o'clock at night, but I bet it slows down with the kids.
But my, my thing is, and we can either table this to find out from CCE if that's okay, or do we go forward in this, make the recommendation, seven-thirty to six PM or seven PM, whatever, to committee months, and on Saturdays from nine AM to twelve PM? Excuse me, Tony? And, and, and Corp Counsel, Dan Garstein?
Yeah, John, did you check with Sue Cahill how they addressed this when they had their site plan approved? Because they should have submitted a plan with regard to a loading zone, and I'm sure the planning board addressed all of this. And this is, if this is a deviation from the site plan, or if it's a new request based upon a change in their attendance or their program, you know, we need to know what the previous plan was and how this deviates from that. So in terms of Tony's suggestion that it be tabled, that's something that we certainly should look into.
Yeah, I did not make those inquiries. If, I'll, I'll just add though that if the common council approves a loading zone, it will not be for the exclusive use of the CCE or, or any other party. It, it can be used by any area business. So I don't know if that changes your, the need to consult their site plan approval.
Well, part of site plan approval was them explaining what their plan was to load and unload students into the building. So if, again, they're deviating from that, it needs to, you know, it, it needs to be checked with the planning department, because the planning department may have made a determination with regard to where loading should be done from.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I'd be more happy to table, and I'll reach out, well, and city hall's closed tomorrow, right? City, city hall's open tomorrow? Oh, so bad, too bad. So I will, I'll reach out to Sue Cahill tomorrow, first thing tomorrow then. And, I mean, I'm assuming they wanted this thing, so we'd have to have a special, and public safety meeting at, prior to caucus on this. I'm not sure the urgent need of this. And Alderwoman, Michelle Hirsch?
I think the need would be urgent, because they have kids going there for school right now, you know, for remote learning, daycare.
And so, you know, so then, I would have to find out that information from them, and if it's, if it's, they'll go ahead. And if it's, if it's, oh, hey, still go ahead, then we would have to have set up a special, uh, you know, public safety, general government meeting at prior to caucus.
And that also may be the difference at this point, that when the site plan was approved, um, school was in session and they weren't doing the remote learning there. Um, and again, they need to clarify whether this is a change in use or an expansion in use or just, um, that the plan that they submitted with regard to loading is just not working.
Tony, just so you know, so Lisa, um, there already a special finance meeting scheduled for, before caucus.
Yep. I know. So we would have to try to squeeze that something in before that. If this is, you know, especially with, and students that are going there at this time. So we'd have to try to figure that out when we can do that. And Alderman O'Reilly?
Uh, Tony, it might not be, uh, too much of an emergency. We can have the DPW go down there, put some temporary signs up and make that just as safe for the meantime until we can get this figured out.
DP can, DPW cannot just put up temporary signs without, um, a resolution from the city. If, if I'm correct, they just can't go and put signs up without, um, our resolution from the city. And, uh, Dan Garstein can-
Yeah, I, I can reach out and I can talk to Drew tomorrow and see what the situation is. If it's an emergency, um, we can certainly, um, take steps. DPW can't just put up signs, but there are other procedures that we can follow to take care of it if it's a genuine emergency. So I will talk to Drew tomorrow. I will talk to Sue tomorrow, um, let you know whether or not there's any action that's needed before, um, you know, um, before caucus on Monday.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
And can you talk to about, you know, is it really, uh, we're, we're concerned about U-PAC and, uh, the timeframe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll find out what the story is.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna table this one. It's, it's right, right now as well. And okay. So I put that over on the side. We've tabled, so we've tabled Hasbrook Avenue. We've tabled CCE at this time at 16 Cedar Street. And the next one on the agenda is, and Wilbur app stop sign at Wilbur Avenue. Michelle, any changes to this?
So this is not, it's, this is the other stop signs, the additional stop signs that were put in that I know we've put, we voted to put the Wilbur Avenue stop sign back at Wilbur and Dunn southbound. Um, but the neighbors, like the communications that I sent in were about neighbors having problems with all, like just the new traffic pattern down there. So.
Or counsel, Dan Garstein?
Uh, yeah. And I believe that John can speak to this as well. Um, we are asking that, um, this one be tabled along with, um, the last item on the agenda, um, for, um, reasons that are fair, that are, uh, covered by attorney client privilege at this point.
So, and your ex, your request is that we table this, this particular request at Wilbur and Dunn Street?
Yes.
All right. And so, and does anybody want any clarification? We can go to, to, um, attorney client privilege or, or this table at this time?
Yeah, we can table it.
Okay. Okay. We will table this. Any other question, discussion on it? So we're just table it. If anybody has objection, okay. And next one on the item is handicap at 10 Linwood Place. Which is to add handicap parking. This location subject to alternate side parking. It is not clear how handicap parking will work at this location. The request involved creating two spaces, one on each side of the road, I believe. And Alderman O'Reilly, this is your, and Ward?
Yes. It's a resident who, uh, is requesting handicap parking. She's, uh, legitimately has a handicap, uh, parking, um, credentials. And I'd, I'd like to see this go in.
A question from the city mayor is, um, is alternate side parking? So would she, would she be requesting it create two spaces, one on each side of the street?
Not this time. I did speak to her about that. Um, and, uh, I told her that the car would have to be moved, um, during snow, uh, emergency. John, what do you think about the, that on Linwood? We had this discussion about another person and I don't think the sign was actually put in the right place. But, uh, do you think there should be one handicap sign on both sides of the street?
John is the one that stated it.
Right. So, so it's not, so this location has alternate side parking at all times or well, seasonally. It's, it's not, it's not just during sm- snow emergencies, but it's, it's for certain months. I think it's November through April. It's alternate side regardless of a snow emergency or not.
See, I didn't know that. I thought it was just snow emergencies. What are your recommendations, John?
Well, if they, if, if the, if the overall street is gonna retain the alternate side designation, then it's, it seems just granting of handicap parking on one side would, would only be meaningful for, for half of the days during that, during the winter. Otherwise, you know, otherwise it, you'd have to consider granting two, two spaces.
All right. So let's, let's try to grant her the one space in front of her house right now. And then I can come back and try to grant her another space if requested. She didn't seem to think she needed that. I don't know if the police are enforcing that when there's no smell on the street. I don't think so.
So we're gonna put handicap parking at, at 10 Linwood Place?
Excuse me. Uh, police absolutely enforce the, the alternate side of the street. My parking enforcement people, um, and a handicap designation doesn't override the alternate side of the street parking. So if she's parking in her handicap spot on a day, um, when you're not supposed to park on that side of the street, she's gonna get a ticket.
Keep your people off Linwood Street, would you?
Fully or so simple.
Do you wanna do all of it?
I guess, I guess, I, do I need to change my, my communication? I guess I'm requesting handicap signs and, uh, on 10 Linwood and across the street.
Would we need a designation for that? And, and city engineer John Schultz, would we just put across the street from 10 Linwood Place?
Yeah. So, so long as it's clearly designated. I'll just add, I, I think, uh, Tony, do you, you got communication from, uh, Ed Norman on this one as well? Do you wanna read that into the, into the record?
You guys all mute or something? I'm getting all this feedback.
Yeah, Tony, I don't know if you heard me. I was just gonna add that, uh, Ed Norman also had comments on this. Did you read those?
I can read that. It says, this is from superintendent public works, Ed Norman. He saw us pertaining to a handicap sign in Linwood Place. There are seasonal alternative, alternate side parking in this co- sheet, location. And there is also off street parking for the resident. So that is what he had in regard to that particular item. Handicap sign, there are seasonal alternate, alternate side parking at this location. There, there is also off street parking for the resident. So. That is what, and I got from Mr. Norman regarding to that.
So, yeah, that, this is, uh-
No, Randy, I'm sorry.
They don't have a driveway, it looks like.
So, I mean, my, my thing is, is that I would have to find a number because if, uh, we put it across the street from 10 Linwood, it'll have this, somebody's residence. You gotta make sure that it's, they don't have handicap, well, just gotta make sure that it's not blocking. I don't know. I, I mean, I guess you were gonna set up the double check to make sure, and. That's not blocking somebody else's residence. I don't know if that matters or not. And I know you've been, while with Alderman Riley, so I don't, not sure again, if you wanted just do 10 and then come back to see if you have to put a handicap across the street and get that location. City engineer John Schultz?
Yeah. Just, just looking at the mapping of this area that if you, if, if the council was to state, you know, at this location and directly across the street, that would be, that would be descriptive enough. And there does appear to be, uh, a curb without a curb cut available, but it is directly in front of another person's home. So normally you're here considering handicap parking in front of the resident's house only. In this case, if you, if you grant two, it's in front of their house and, and a neighbor's house.
Correct. And Randy Scott Childress?
Yeah. And it appears that the house that's directly across the street does not have a driveway, does not have off street parking. So that would definitely be something to look at. I can't tell the house next to it, um, uh, does have a driveway. So, you know, I don't know if they would be directly across the street from each other. That's the only issue I would see there.
So, and all the men, Patrick O'Reilly, we have the thing where we can just put it out in front of 10 Linwood Place and on the days that is alternate parking and this resident would have to park in the driveway. Their driveway is, appears that they do have a driveway?
I think so. Looks like it.
I mean, again, to put a handicap across the street that doesn't have off street parking and now you're taking up the resident and neighbor across the street parking and you'll get back and forth in that. Or you can come back and later and see what they say. I don't wanna hold this up if that's, if they need this parking.
Let's put the park, uh, you know what I mean? You can't park it. It's every other day, John? Is that what it is? Tony, every other day? That's not gonna help her out, is it?
For those 10 months, I'm assuming that's what John, the city engineer is saying is for 10 months is every other day. Uh, I don't, I've never been over there yet.
For 10 months, only for three, right, John?
Yeah. Yeah. It's just during the winter. I think it's November through April.
Yes. Okay. Sorry. Three months. All the women and Michelle Hirsch?
Well, I think that we would have to, my opinion is that we would have to put a handicap sign on both sides of the street because she's not gonna become unhandicapped for three months of the year.
Right.
Um, and we, you know, and only be, you know, needing handicap space on the even side of the street. You know, she's gonna need it on both sides.
My only concern with that is that, that's what I ran into with, uh, uh, Ravine Street. And then the resident, we went and put it in and then the resident didn't want the handicaps on across the street because they didn't want to jeopardize or inconvenience their neighbor across the street. So now we go and put this legislation in and this person didn't want that. Now, if it gets installed, it's gonna be there until it gets uninstalled. So I would suggest that Mr. O'Reilly go back and to this resident in regard, do they want this handicap parking on both sides of the street? And that we would then have, have to talk to the neighbor across the street and inform them that this handicap sign is gonna go in.
All right, Tony, that sounds like a good idea. Let's put it on the one side of the street for now. I'll go talk to the resident and I'll come back to you, that you guys.
All right. Now we're gonna put handicap sign, park it at 10 Linwood Place.
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
Any more discussion on it? We got a motion? Michelle Hirsch, second, Randy Scott Childress, all in favor? Good. Sounds like a plan. All righty. So I believe that is it. The last item, uh, of discussion and, and has been tabled at this time at the request of corp counsel. And so I have no old business. Is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too, John. Thank you again, everybody. Happy, have a good, happy-
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Social distance, 10 people. Social distance, 10 people. Patrick?
Got it, Tony. Got it. No bars.
All righty. And I will, and, and Dan, I will look for your call tomorrow, communication and what you, in regard to, especially with Drew and Sue.
Are you getting my text, Tony? Cause I'll probably just text you.
Yes. I, yes, I have been. Yes.
Okay. Good enough. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And all.
Good night, all.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye-bye.
You safe?